I'd like to call to order the March 28th, 2023 meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and welcome to our meeting. Well, Mary, do the roll call, please?
I'd love to.
Maderas?
Here.
Hool?
Here.
Petway?
Here.
Granlin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Great, thank you. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And we'll start off with our agenda approval announcements and correspondence. Can we start with an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
A second by Jessica. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, for our announcements, April 3rd through 7th is no school for spring break. April 10th is no school for grading and service day. April 11th at 7:00 PM is our regular school board meeting here in the community room. April 18th at 5:30 PM is our school board work session here in the community room. And April 25th at 7:00 PM is a regular school board meeting here in the community room. There is also a community engagement listening session on April 25th at 5:45. Next, we'll move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. And next, we'll move on to communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. We do have a three-minute time limit per presenter, so you may hear a little beep when three minutes is up. We do have some folks here to talk with us. So it was just one second, you're good to go. Thank you and welcome back if you're watching us online. We had a couple of representatives come and talk to us regarding the EL and special ed class sizes and support at the high school, safety at Columbia Academy, and the environment at Columbia Academy during breakfast and lunch. So thank you to those who came to talk with us. Next, we have our consent agenda. Included in the consent agenda is the personnel report. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we have our acknowledgement of contributions. This is a resolution, so I'll go ahead and read this and then get a motion in a second to move that forward. Our acknowledgement of contributions resolution, whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purchase and apply any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as a trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board, School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation of the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $12,805.50. The detailed background includes monetary donations. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School for the New York Studies Seminar, James Smith, in the amount of $250. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund, George Holt, $1,500. Columbia Heights Fridley Kiwanis Club, $2,000. Dean and Joyce Bliss, $2,000. Fridley Lions Club, $3,000. Raskmussen Northeast Bank Foundation, $1,500. And AmeriPrize Financial, $2,000. Value and Kind, donation of prom dresses was made to Columbia Heights High School by Leslie Shirck for student needs, estimated value of $200. Donation of books was made to Valley View Elementary by Mama Slamadama, I've been practicing that one, and Company Limited for student needs, estimated value of $355.50. Total fiscal year 2022-2023 monetary contributions to date, $85,759.86. Can I get a motion to approve the acknowledgement of contributions resolution?
So moved.
Michelle, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Mary?
I mean, per usual, I am every, every time we're going through these and we see these donations, I am continually just amazed and so grateful for our community and thank you all so much for all of the support and everything that you do for that, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mary, since this is a resolution, we do the roll call vote, please. Yep, Maderas?
Aye.
Hool?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Granlin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller? Aye. Resolution passes. Next, we will move on to our discussion reports and information items, starting with reports from the members of the board. And tonight, we will start with Jessica.
Sure. So since our last meeting, I attended the Highland Book Bash event, which was a really great chance to talk with families and staff at the school. It was a really fun event. I attended the work session last week and the tour of North Park School for Innovation right before this meeting, which was the most, I guess, intensive tour of the building that I've had since the renovation. So that was really cool to see all of the programming in that building. And then I also attended the MSBA webinar on budget challenges for FY '24, which is recorded if anyone's interested in that, and it definitely just provides some additional context to some of the financial conversation that we had at our work session last week, you know, on a more statewide level, so. That's me. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary? Yeah, so I also attended the tour of North Park, and that was amazing, and the work session last week. I have been helping out at Columbia Academy. And I have, let's see, I had lots of phone calls, so I had a phone call and a meeting with Superintendent Stenbik. A phone call with Chair Mueller and a phone call with Member Maderas, and then a quick check-in with Member Petway on our way here tonight. And just lots and lots of conversations with staff and community members and even students, talking about some concerns about safety as were mentioned, and then also talking about how we utilize our space, including the media center, and what sort of books kids would be interested in reading, which always gets passed right on through teaching and learning. And I, if I forgot something, I will maybe add it next time, but I think that that is it. Thank you. Great, thank you very much. Michelle?
So I also attended last week's work session and the tour of North Park before this meeting. I also spoke with Member Granlin tonight. And last week, there was a meeting for the Families of Color affinity group at North Park, to which I'm also the parent facilitator of, for one of them, so that was a good meeting that we had. I also wanted to mention that North Park did an amazing job with their Heart Health Challenge and raised $6,778. And they celebrated by pouring buckets of ice water on many of their teachers. So that was amazing because I had to hear all about how it was the best day at school ever. So that was great, and they were champs about it. And also, I have registered and will be attending my Phase III and IV for my MSBA workshops and training for the board.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Julie?
I attended the tour of North Park today, and I just want to say it's impressive to see the renovations that were made and the just the flexible student places for learning. I just feel that that was probably the highlight to me, was just the environments that were created so that all students would be comfortable in those environments, so.
Laura?
Yes, well, I also attended the work session last week. You know, we were doing some more work on our book study. We choose a book every year and try to follow along with what the staff is learning. Definitely gives us more insight into some of the challenges that go along with teaching. I know I, for one, do not have any type of teaching background, so being able to understand the new demands that are placed, I think is extremely helpful, and we had a really robust discussion. So I look forward to maybe seeing how we can assist with governance and policy on being able to support our staff and improve our student, you know, improve our student outcomes. I also managed to catch the last, like, half hour of the speech showcase over at the high school, which was amazing. I am so incredibly impressed. I mean, they are so talented and everybody had such a good time. And seeing all the students just support each other, it's a wonderful thing. It was really great. I really wish I could have seen the whole thing. I wish it had been recorded. I did manage to catch the last tail end of the tour over at North Park, and just seeing all those new spaces and the new colors in the hallway, and it looks like a brand-new school. And I'm really glad to see that the crack has been repaired in the hallway. Every time I walked past that, it would make me cringe, you know, and I knew it wasn't structural, it just looked bad, you know, so I'm glad that that's taken care of. That was the highlight of my day today. And then the chair meeting just prior to this one.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. For my report, it was a busy couple of weeks. I had several conversations with Superintendent Stenbik, conversations with Member Granlin, and conversations with Member Hool. Also attended the work session last week, a chair meeting prior to that. The North Park tour, which I will just say ditto for everything that you all said on that. And then the work session, or excuse me, the chair meeting prior to this meeting as well. Thank you all. Superintendent Stenbik, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, I do. Brief report. I'm keeping an eye on the legislative session, including the proposed potential new unfunded mandates that would exceed any potential increase that would be given to this school districts. And Director Hennekenz has compiled a report or a costing sheet for that, and I will provide the board with more information. I was sorry to miss the last regular board meeting, but pleased to join the New York Studies Seminar and see our students experience really incredible learning experiences. And I want to acknowledge and thank all of our school staff. In many ways, this has been another challenging year. And I hope that everyone has a relaxing and much-deserved spring break next week. And I had conversations with Chair Mueller, Member Granlin. It was a delight to tour you all around to see North Park, and I think it's really impressive that this board is committed to touring each of the facilities and, you know, being in the buildings and seeing them, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to the Modern Classroom Project with Director Tuckrell and team.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here with a wonderful team. I was happy you saw team in there, so I wasn't doing it all by myself because I was ready to hand it off to them. I'm here with our elementary technology integration specialist, Katie Hale, and our personalized learning facilitator who focuses on secondary, Leslie Maher, to share about the Modern Classrooms Project. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, and all succeed. Our core values tonight are collaboration, courage, and innovation. And the Columbia Heights core values are aligned with the Columbia Heights Board of Education Equity Statement. And with that, I'm going to pass it to our technology integration specialist who focuses on elementary, Katie Hale.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. This evening, we are here to share about the Modern Classroom Project and its implementation here in Columbia Heights Public Schools. The Modern Classroom Project, or MCP, has three core pillars: blended instruction, self-paced structure, and proficiency-based grading. You can go to the next slide for me. In lieu of traditional live lectures, students receive content through teacher-created videos. Using video to deliver content frees up the teacher to connect with students in small groups or individually to address questions or misconceptions. Being able to pause, rewind, or re-watch the content accommodates diverse student needs. The second pillar, self-pacing, allows students to move through content at their own pace within a lesson or unit. Typically, in our district, we have seen self-pacing packaged in a playlist format. Here, you can see a first-grade example where students are able to move through lessons on their own pace, but also know which lesson is the goal lesson for that day. Students can see who is working on the same lesson as them so that they can collaborate during work time and ask each other questions. On the bottom, you'll see a middle-school example where students and teachers are able to see which activities have been completed for each lesson. Playlists include a series of activities students must do in order to learn the content. And to further accommodate student needs, the teacher can provide some extra should-or-could-do activities to deepen student understanding. The third pillar of the MCP model is proficiency-based progress. After each lesson, students take a short, targeted mastery check. Teachers can grade these on the spot with students and give feedback when necessary. Students are able to revise their mastery checks, and progress happens when students show proficiency. To track student progress, teachers use some kind of a tracker, either displayed publicly so students can see who is on the same lesson as them, as you saw on the previous slide, or students are given their own to check off as they work through activities. Most of our teachers are in their first year of training and implementing MCP. And here you can see the number of trained teachers. Those are in their first year of implementation and those that are in their second year. And at this time, I'm going to let my colleague Leslie share some exciting data we've collected from students and staff in regards to their experience with MCP.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. Thank you for the opportunity to share our work and our data with you this evening. This year, we've been developing a multifaceted approach to measuring the impact of Modern Classroom Project on the teaching and learning in our schools. And this evening, I'll be presenting some data for two surveys we developed this fall to examine the impact on the teacher and student experience in Modern Classroom Project classrooms. First, I'll show three key data points from our student survey that this fall included almost 700 responses from students in grades 1 through 12 across all five buildings. And in our first data point, "My teacher knows my strengths and weaknesses." We're seeing that over 50% of our students are indicating either agree or strongly agree. This data point is showing us that our students feel seen and known by their teachers, which speaks to how this model empowers teachers to connect more frequently with students one-on-one. Our second data point, "I can teach myself new academic content and skills," is showing highly positive indicators of student self-belief and self-efficacy. Our students believe that they can learn and learn well in our classrooms. The third data point, "I always have something challenging to do in class," tells us that our students across the board are feeling challenged. And a common effect of Modern Classroom Project implementation is that students, or teachers, rather, are equipped to meet all of our students where they're at. And our data is showing that this is happening in our classrooms as well. Next, we have four data points from our teacher survey, which will be broken down by experience level. As Katie mentioned, we have several teachers that are in their first year of implementation and several who are in their second year of implementation. And we're excited because this year, we were able to gather some data for our teachers' pre-implementation and pre-training. So here on our first data point, you can see across the board, left to right, pre-implementation to year two. We're looking for lots of growth in the navy and green slices of this pie chart because that shows growth in agree and strongly agree. So we're excited about the growth that we're seeing here. I have a clear vision for how my students will learn. We see some teachers' pre-implementation feeling something uncertainty, and then by year two, we're seeing 100% of our teachers either agreeing or strongly agreeing that they have a clear vision for how their students will learn. We see a very similar growth pattern in this second data point. I understand what each of my students has and has not mastered. Teachers are able to gain this very specific insight through the mastery check practice and increased one-on-one connection. Again, in this third data point, we're seeing very similar and exciting growth from pre-implementation to year two plus. We tend to see busier data in this middle section where year one is, and that's very typical of a first-year of implementation as teachers try lots of new things, they're growing their practice, they're refining their practice. In several of our data points, we saw a little bit busier data, but we're excited to see that kind of settle by year two. So this data point and the data point previous, really excited about those two data points because we know that there are a lot of really diverse needs in our classroom, and that includes diverse academic needs, diverse language needs, and also diverse social, emotional needs. And so we're really excited for how this model empowers and equips our teachers to really do that one-onconnection with students, and again, gauge where each of them are at academically and also just have that one-on-one to build increased connection and relationship with our students. And finally, our survey also measured the impact of Modern Classroom Project on the well-being of our staff. So this data point, and among several others, shows really positive impact on our teacher well-being. For those teachers that are implementing, we're seeing kind of reversed growth the other way. We're seeing by year two plus, all of our teachers are either strongly disagreeing or disagreeing that classroom is stressful. It's busy and very active, but our teachers are feeling equipped and empowered to address the student needs, and we're seeing their stress levels drop. So we're really excited for the positive impact on our teacher well-being as well. Moving ahead, we have two main goals. First, to sustain the implementation that we're already seeing in our schools, and also then to grow our implementation. So we're attempting to sustain the things that we already know are working. Katie and I provide regular and sustained coaching for teachers that are in their first year of implementation and extending into year two plus. We also know that providing space for our teachers to collaborate, share ideas with each other has been extremely crucial to their growth and their implementation. And looking ahead, we're really looking forward to a wonderful opportunity to partner with the Modern Classroom Project to send teachers to some training and then also partner with them to do some implementations for the coming 2023, 2024 school year to build our internal capacity and grow internal leaders from the Modern Classroom Project. So thank you for the, again, for the opportunity to share our work and really exciting data with you this evening. And I'm going to turn it back to Director Tuckrell to field questions at this time.
Great. Any questions, Laura?
We both do.
We'll start with Laura.
Yeah, I actually have a couple here. The one thing that I was, because of the fact that these need to be prerecorded, how are we allocating for the additional prep time that these teachers are having to do to be able to prepare for these lessons? And is there a strategy where it's going to be, you know, topic-related? I'm just, I don't like adding additional, I think this is great and it needs to be done. I just want to make sure that we're not doubling up on the amount of work.
Thank you. That's a great question. I'll let Leslie and Katie add in. We have provided time on our professional development days for the Modern Classroom Project to meet together. There work with Leslie and Katie after school. We've also provided paid time to help support additional training or support that's needed there. So we're trying to find the ways that we can help support them, and we're going to continue to check in with them to see what kind of support is needed. The first year of implementation does take a lot more work, but we're noticing as we check in with teachers in their second year and as we move on, that it's less work and it's more about providing different differentiation or that small group that they're working with. So that first year does take a lot more work, and we're trying to find ways to support them with that.
Can I ask more questions?
Yep.
Okay. And then the other one was, can students access these lessons off-site for being able to backtrack or to catch up on lessons that they've missed or didn't fully comprehend?
Leslie? As well. I'll let you share.
Yes, that's a great question, and one of the biggest benefits that we've seen of MCP implementation, especially looking back to last year when we had more students needing to stay home quarantining. It was an early success that we saw in our implementation, and teachers are really finding that using prerecorded videos and packaging this in a more self-paced manner allows them to more easily address students when they're absent. It's less about pulling the student aside to quickly go over the lesson and material that they missed. The students are really able to get a pretty even experience even when they're needing to miss school. So yes, they can access it off-site, and that's one of the biggest things we're seeing with this model.
Thank you.
Great. Mary?
Well, Laura asked me, or asked the first question I was going to ask, too, so I wanted to make sure that we were providing time. I think the other question that I have is, what are the classes that are included in this rollout right now? And which ones are we looking to push into and start?
Leslie, do you want to share from the secondary side, and then Katie can jump in for elementary?
Sure. Broadly speaking, we're seeing implementation at both secondary buildings in English and math. We're also seeing it showing up in some of our other core and elective classes. We have some teachers at the high school in social studies engaging, and then our Spanish teacher at the middle school is also engaging, as well as some of our EL teachers at Columbia Academy. Really excited to see kind of a diverse group of teachers that maybe wouldn't necessarily always collaborate, coming into the same room to share ideas, share our practice. And I think that's it for secondary.
Well, I would also just say, as you are talking about the highlights and all of the things that are going well with the program, I do see our teachers that are here, like, nodding along in agreement, so it looks like that's probably, you know, you very well felt from your teachers as well.
Do you want to let Katie answer? She was going to-
Oh, Katie, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. We do actually have someone in first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade all implementing some component of the Modern Classroom Project. There is interest in some kindergarten classrooms, but there's a little bit more work, I think, that goes into the primary grades, so we're slowly starting to think about how to roll that out. And we do have a teacher in a self-contained program that is using the model and really finding success with their students as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, sorry about that. I think the last thing that I was curious about is, is there any, like, do students know that they are in, like, the class that is doing the Modern Classroom Project? Or do parents know that they are, you know, these are being tried and the successes are growing on? Or is that just more something that, as we're going, is just sort of the direction we're going?
I can start it off, Leslie, if you want to jump in. That's a component we've been working on, is really building some communication to provide to families about what it looks like. Sometimes people think they're on their device the whole time and not interacting with the teacher, not having that opportunity to get support. And really, it's the opposite. They're interacting with their device, but they're also interacting with students and teachers during that time. It allows that time to happen, so we're working on communication to get out to families as we begin to grow a little more here and learn more about it. And so hopefully soon, we'll have that communication going out. I know many of the teachers did communicate in their syllabus or during conference time. And many of our secondary classes that primarily use Modern Classroom in their model, they are communicating that out to families as the students are signing up.
I'd add that a really poor component of the Modern Classroom Project that we haven't explained yet is that it's very important to very intentionally roll out the model with your students through what they call a Unit Zero. And in that unit, it can be a very short unit, but you're reviewing the routines, you're reviewing kind of how this class will function. It's important in that initial run of self-pacing to really help your students feel equipped to learn in a way that's, for many students, a new way to tackle their learning. And while the term "Modern Classroom Project" maybe isn't as prevalent- And while the term Modern Classroom Project maybe isn't as prevalent at the classroom, there are specific terms that many of our teachers use that are consistent that creates a really predictable structured learning environment for theirs.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question. So the, this is a self-paced kind of program. So what if students are just flying through this? Check, 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 check. What do we do to keep them moving and learning, not just kind of going, I'm going to do this really slow? You know, just keeping pace correctly. What does that look like?
I'm giving it to Leslie here.
I can share. Yeah, I would say that this is one of the things that especially teachers in their first years, they're, they learn to kind of refine that practice as they work through how the Modern Classroom Project shows up in their classroom. But I want to call back to something that Katie mentioned in her slides. We, Modern Classroom splits up tasks by must-do, should-do, and aspire to do. And teachers don't always use those exact terms, but they identify what are the foundational pieces that students must complete in order to be ready for the next unit of study. And then they also layer in things that are called should-do's, could-do's, may-do's. Those are intended to either give students more practice who need to kind of develop this further before they're ready to demonstrate proficiency. And it also helps provide enrichment and deeper learning opportunities for those students that like to check, 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 and move quickly for the material. So it kind of helps provide increased practice for those students that may need it. And it also provides deeper learning for students that are ready for increased challenge.
A follow-up. Thank you for that. Are they tested after each section so they know? And then if they are doing something like this at home, there's kind of two parts. How do we make sure that they're not just looking all up the answers on Google or doing something like that? How do we monitor the kids? I know that's silly, but.
No, it's a very common question. As far as students looking up the answers, we do a lot of work with our teachers to make sure that our assessments are less Google-able. And in some ways, our teachers have different assessment practices in place that kind of help mitigate some of that. For example, some of our teachers only allow mastery checks within the four walls of their classroom, and it's a paper-based assessment. And they have designated zones in their classroom where the students are demonstrating that proficiency. So it kind of mitigates access to Google, et cetera. And then, yes, they are, the Modern Classroom Project does kind of encourage teachers to do one learning objective to one mastery check, so that it gives teachers a really granular look at what a student specifically knows and where they need to kind of bridge to their skills. So yes, Modern Classroom Project has a small formative assessment for each learning target, and that builds then to an end-of-unit summit of typically for teachers.
I know the audio was kind of cutting out there. Were you able to hear?
Yeah, I got the gist of it. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Leslie's computer audio is a little off. I always smile when it's a technology person who's having technology issues. I was like, oh, I feel a little better. Sorry about that.
Other questions? Jessica?
Well, first of all, thank you. I really appreciate this overview. I think it's especially pertinent in light of the discussion that we've been having as a board when it comes to thinking about, you know, agency. We talked about patagonia voice in, in our, in our book study and thinking about examples of the way that that's really being used in the classroom to move towards agency for students, especially when we're talking about the self-paced nature of this program and mastery-based grading. And I see a really strong connection too between the skills that we're teaching students through the, through Modern Classroom and college readiness, whatever that looks like for a student. So I think that's really helpful to see how it's implemented at the elementary and the secondary level. And I just wanted to note that I really appreciated Leslie's comments in response to Dr. Granland's question about implementation, that we're, we're being very explicit with students about what Modern Classroom is and how to be successful in, in learning some of those new skills. So I really appreciate that. I do have a question after my long ramble, which is really about those survey results and just wondering if there, you, you noticed any difference in the results between the respondents at the elementary level or their secondary level? Or if it was pretty, pretty kind of, I, pretty normal across the board?
Standard guys, thank you.
I, I think they were pretty normal across the board. The biggest difference is that elementary doesn't have any year-two implementers. Last year was really more geared to secondary. We just didn't have a lot of elementary teachers that were interested. This year, we've trained a lot of teachers and they're in their first year, so there isn't as much data from them. But the data that we have found and the teachers that I've talked to are initially feeling a little bit more overwhelmed with the work. But now that they've kind of fallen to their groove, are really finding that they are, they're pleased with what they're noticing in their classroom. They're able to make those connections with students. They're able to really know where their students are at. So I, I feel like we will see very similar data next year when the elementary teachers then will be in their second year as well.
Thank you. And that was actually my follow-up question then was like sort of looking at the longitudinal evaluation of this program. Is the survey sort of the plan for evaluation moving forward? Or are there other, are there pieces that you're planning on as this gets scaled up?
We are definitely planning on giving the survey out again in the fall of 2023 and continuing to just kind of monitor data.
Thank you.
Michelle? So I'm wondering if this doesn't work for certain students, what's the alternative? Is there like a different lesson plan or something else put in place? And would that be more work for the teachers in order to help those students who can't or won't or have a hard time with this?
I can start it off, and Leslie, Katie, if you want to jump in. Yes, I think the teachers have done a really nice job of noticing if students are struggling, and this has given them the opportunity to pull students and do a small group lesson, or to pull students and keep them in elementary up on the carpet area and do another lesson while other students are able to move forward and move at a different pace. So I think this has actually opened up opportunities where sometimes the whole group sitting on the carpet has a harder time all being on the same pace or being together. This has given the opportunity to differentiate in a different way.
And I guess a follow-up to that would be, have you seen in any of the past, I guess, studies that a class may be divided even to where some of the class is a little further ahead and some of the class is a little bit more, you know, behind? Have you seen that divide at all?
Leslie, I'm going to see if you, you have, have a couple more implementers in Katie, so.
I would say it's pretty typical within a unit of study, especially in the middle of the unit, to see a pretty even spread. You know, we have kind of some that like to, you know, push ahead really quickly, some that are content to stay on the pace, and then others that maybe take a little longer to work through their must-dos. The goal with keeping the self-pacing within a unit of study though, is to provide the grace of a fresh start with every new unit. And so even though within the unit, we have a spread of students kind of in a lot of different places, with every new unit, we do see kind of that fresh start of like, now you get to start again. So if a student falls down during a unit and maybe is delaying on their work with the next unit, they get to start again. Does that answer your question?
I guess it gave me a new one. Well, only because now I'm thinking, well, what hap, what happens to that unit though? Do they not finish it? Or is there like now they feel pressured to finish this thing that they fell behind in? Is there like a sense of overwhelming, you know,ness there?
You were asking a question that comes up for many teachers as well. So, well done. I think that, that answer to that really varies across the board. And I think I'll, I'll call back to what Tara just shared about teachers feeling they have the space and time to address those student individual needs. So kind of depending on how they've set it up, they might choose to leverage some self-pacing time to do some intervention with a student. They might, I know some teachers say, okay, let's start fresh, let this be our focus for now, and you and I will create a plan to address these other gaps later. But that really varies classroom to classroom, I would say. Tara, I don't know. Katie?
That answers, that answers it pretty much. I, I get it. It varies, and it's up to the teachers. Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes?
Just a comment, because I'm out in schools and classrooms every week, I'm able to see this in action. And so thinking about elementary, for example, it's very different from 10 years ago where independent reading time was a lot less structured. Where now during the playlist time, students have those tasks, and I ask them, what are you working on and why are you working on this? And they know what they're doing, they know why they're doing it, and they're able to complete the tasks. Meanwhile, the teacher, I can see the teacher working with a small group of students over there. So from what I'm hearing, it's nice for the teachers to work with those smaller groups rather than always with the full classroom. And I've just been really impressed with the, the independent time where students are actually advancing and understanding what they're doing, which is pretty different from what I've seen in, in the past, where they didn't have that structure and support.
Thank you. Julie?
I'm sorry, can I ask another question? So is this for all the students in elementary? Or is this just special students? What, how do we, how does, who goes on to this type of learning versus a standard classroom setting?
It's pretty new, so we're just implementing it. So not all teachers are implementing it.
Okay.
So, you know, some teachers are implementing it in our, in their second year or first year or about to enter. So it's kind of a rolling, it's kind of a rollout.
So is there statistics that says this is better for, I mean, what, what kind of research has been done related to this type of learning environment?
We are trying, good question. We're collecting information now, looking at student data and looking for our own successes. There are research studies that have been done showing the success of students being able to meet standards and show proficiency in standards and academic achievement. But we really want to focus in on our students and see what's working for our students. So that's something that we meet on often, is really looking at the scores that are coming out, meeting with our teachers, adjusting things as needed. In the elementary, it is only parts of the day. It might just be the literacy block when they're in independent reading, and the rest of the day might look like any other classroom. So we really are focusing in small in order to make sure that we see successes and that we're supporting in the way we need to before expanding.
Mary?
I think, just one more thing I wanted to add, I think one of the benefits of this is that with things like math, because math is taught differently than how a lot of parents learned it, or maybe they didn't go that far in math. And I think one of the benefits is really being able to sit down with your child and watch those videos together so that you understand how the teacher is teaching it. And you also are able to, like, you're seeing what your child is seeing, what they're hearing, and it, I think, makes a really great bonding opportunity. I say because I hear it happening in the other room, because I'm not the parent that knows math. And so I think that that's been really incredibly helpful from this too, so.
Thank you. Lots of great questions. I appreciate all of those questions and learning a lot. Any other questions? All right. Thank you all for your presentation today. Very informative.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to the revocation of revol, let me start over. Revocation of resolution establishing school district's primary election system. Apparently that's really hard to say.
You did it. You did it, Phil.
My goodness. So this is something that, I, I'm your presenter today on this. This is something that was talked about in our work session. And I know we had a lot of questions and came back, and we just really talked about having that conversation here at the board table as well. This has come up. We have a resolution establishing our school district's primary election system. We are one of eight, only eight districts in the state of Minnesota that has school district primaries. And one of the reasons why this came up is knowing that we have a special election coming this November. There is no other election that is happening at the same time. So our, there's no city council or state elections, you know, that we know of at this time. So it will just be school district election. So this will be the only thing on the primary. It does cost our district about $10,000 to do a primary election. And so the state statute permits us to revoke our resolution establishing the primary election system that we currently have. So bringing this up for consideration and conversation about whether or not we want to can, you know, plan on having a primary for our special election coming up in November. I did review the state statute. I know we had talked about that at our work session. I did review the state statute, and as the state statute is written, really what we have the opportunity to do is a primary or not. We can't change the context of the primary or the rules of the primary. I know one of the things that we had talked about was, can we change it so instead of having twice as many candidates as seats? If it can be four times as many or, you know, so that the primary wouldn't be triggered at three candidates, but maybe four or five? And that's, that's not permitted. If you have a primary, then you're following the primary processes or rules, which is, here, but here, it would be more than twice as many school board candidates as there are positions, and that would trigger your primary. So open it up for questions, conversation, thoughts on the possibility of revoking our resolution on primary and not holding a primary election this year. Julie?
I've thought about this, and so my, I realize that what's really costly is the special election. Just the fact that, you know, somebody resigns and or leaves, the special election is what is expensive. In our case, because it's a special election and the fact that nobody else has an election, it's going to be costly. But it's rarely that way, you know. Primaries under a general election year are really important because if you don't have some way of weaning down the candidates, or, you know, you know what I mean? Bringing that down to a reasonable number to, for, you know, the one-to-one type of election, you can over, you, you would have over number of people at the general election, which then dilutes the percentages of people, you know, when they vote. You know, it, it might only take 1,500 votes to, to get in. When you really want a predominant amount of people in your community voting for people they really want on the board, instead of this, you know, massive number of, and, and I would say currently in the political environment that we're in, there is, I've seen it, opportunity for people to load a lot of people to vote for. And then it does dilute it so badly that, you know, certain people get in and certain people don't. And so it kind of allows for some cheating. And so I would prefer to keep it, and I know it's expensive, especially during an election year like this. But I think in the long term, it's the right decision to have a primary.
One, thank you for that. One item to note with this is that this can be an annual decision. So this can be something that if we, if we do, and I will tell you, I'm not telling you one way or another at this point, but if we do revoke the resolution on requiring the primary, that would go through, you know, through this election cycle and until we would then could do a new resolution on a primary. So Julie, to your comment, if this was something that the board was interested in, due to the nature of this being a special election and we're the only thing on the ballot, we could make that decision. And then next year, prior to April 15th, we can put in place a resolution to hold primaries. So that, once you make the decision, it's not the forever decision. You do have to either put in place and if it's in place, revoke it. And if you revoke it, put it in place again. But that is something that, that can, that can happen. So I, I would say if the board chooses to do that, my opinion would be for us to kind of come up with a scenario in which it's consistently done, right? So it's done that maybe if there is just a special election, we repeal the primary, but always hold primaries on regular elections. You know, that, that type of thing would be a board understanding. But Mary?
One question I have, just in regards to what you were sharing, Julie, is I know that we, I think our district has had actually quite a few special elections in our school board, elections just in general. And I can think of three off the top of my head in the last 12-ish years, which is, I think probably more than you see in other, I'm not, I'm guessing, I don't know. Compared to our city council, it's definitely a very big difference. So I'm just, I'm curious and I, I do appreciate the clarification too, just that, you know, when it has special election, it does have, it does carry, it sits differently within the community. Because again, to your point, with a special election, we don't want to elect somebody with only, you know, 124 people voting in a special election, which has happened in other school districts near ours. And $10,000, especially in this current environment where we're at, much like nearly every other school district in the entire state, $10,000, it hits hard. It hits really hard. And it's tricky. We absolutely want to support primaries and we want to support people that are, that are running for office and we want people to feel heard and voted, like for their, for their candidates. I just am really struggling with the cost, especially when we've had so many special elections and it adds up. So I'm, I'm very glad for the conversation though.
Jessica?
We did have some pretty robust discussion about this at the work session and I think many of us are, are struggling, at least I'm still struggling with a lot of these considerations on the cost side of things and what that means in the context of, you know, overall what our financial situation looks like. And then also a lot of the, the points that you raised, Julie, I think many of us are concerned about that too. I do wonder, and again, not knowing, I don't really know that I'm prepared to say like today, how I, you know, what I would, what I would take action on or not. I wonder, is there, Lauren, in listening to you thinking, like, you know, we could pet, we could revoke a resolution, we could enact a resolution in the future. If the dividing line for the board really seems to be around the years where we have special election and additional costs, I wonder if an option would be to revoke the current resolution, replace it with a resolution that would maybe be more durable, but would really delineate that, that, those types of elections and say that, you know, in years where we have a special election, we don't have a primary. In years where we do, or where it's a general election, that we would invoke our ability as a board to, to have a primary. I don't know if that's an option or how folks feel about that. But I, I also want to avoid a situation and I, I think it was mentioned in the work session too, where we're sort of, you know, providing whiplash to the community back and forth about whether there's a primary or not. And, you know, that, that solution would still allow for that flexibility delineation, provide some predictability for the community and for candidates. Again, that's something I just thought about when you were, you know, speaking. So I, I, I don't know if that's even an option.
Yeah, I mean, to answer your question, I don't think it is. I think in order to do that, it would be repeal the resolution and then put a resolution in place. The, the Minnesota statute says the school board of a school district may, by resolution adopted by April 15th of any year, decide to choose nominees for school board by a primary as provided in this section. The resolution, when adopted, is effective for all ensuing elections of board members in that school district until it is revoked.
Okay, so we really would need to revoke, enact, revoke, enact.
Yep.
It does feel kind of whiplashy to me.
Yeah, it does.
I, I'm not comfortable with it, but I, I can tell you, we have a lot of special elections, just even just since I've been on the board and in previous years, because we are a very small district. If you move one block outside of the district, you can no longer be a board member, you know? I mean, that's, that's just how, how simple it can be. And, you know, and I, I mean, even though my heart's usually here, I do have a life outside of the district as well, as, as do all of us. You know, family considerations and things like that. So it can happen very suddenly. Now luckily, the legislature did actually change the law with regards to how, how board members can be, a board vacancy can be filled. There used to actually be for a short period of time that every single board member vacancy had to be filled by special election, which can double up and there were timelines and you had, so we ran, we ran not just one, but multiple primaries and we were the only ones on the ballot. And it wasn't even run, it had to be by certain dates and it was really expensive. And I, I would actually also say in addition that we, we have not typically had, you know, 17 people file for school board. I have seen that in other districts where they consistently have ridiculous amounts of candidates on their general ballot. But we just, we've never traditionally, traditionally, it's been, you know, a little over twice, however many candidates it's running. And I can think of two elections where we only had one candidate on the ballot. You know? I'm, I'm willing to go either way because I think there's rationale both ways. I, I, I don't, I know that about 25%, we do get about a 25% turnout on those special elections. That seems to me to be a fairly good amount of activity, but still that only amounts to maybe a couple of hundred votes in a very off time when people are not thinking about elections unless there is something big on the ballot. That is just, I, I'm willing to go with the, with the will of the board, you know, because I can, I can create an argument both ways. I don't like spending the money. I don't like, I don't like wasting the money.
Yeah, and so if we did have a primary, the primary election would be held on the second Tuesday in August. So I think that, you know, to Laura's point too, that is to take into consideration, you know, who's around?
Right.
You know, that's a, that is a time, I, you know, I'm, to you guys, I'm torn on this because I feel like there's not just the money, but there's a lot of time as I look over at our election clerk that goes into an election, you know, something like this. But I also want to make sure that we have a fair election where a candidate is, is elected by, by the constituents and that we, Julie, I a hundred percent agree with you, you know, kind of having a, a watered down, if you will, process due to having, you know, multiple candidates. And we have had elections where there's been, you know, there has been a need for primary. There, you know, I look at it and that's why I was looking at this, I'm like, well, if there's four people, right, for one spot, that's, that's reasonable. But if there's eight, that's where you get more of the diluted voting. We just don't have that option. If, you know, with one position open, if there's three candidates, it triggers the, it triggers a primary. So that's just, that's kind of what we're, what we're faced with. But I, I too, I, I don't see a perfect decision for us.
Do we know what school districts are, are currently using this primary process?
I know that there's eight in the state and in 2020, White Bear did the resolution to revoke it. I don't know which eight there are, which eight have the primaries.
I do think that's a good question because it might speak to sort of the rationale for continuing, you know?
No, I, I do know of one district that had 17 candidates.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
And this is something that, you know, we make this decision and yes, we could add it back in, but we might have a totally different board and that might, they might think very differently. I, I think we need to look at the future and just say, you know, looking at from a general election standpoint, I, I get it, that I, seriously, I get the fact that it's, it's a, it's a special election and we may not even have to have a primary. But if we do, I, I, I think it's important to, to think of the bigger picture, not just a special election, but the general election and how many people are really running. I, I think we would have had to have one more this last time and we would have had a primary. I was glad I didn't have to primary, but it was one of those things where I kind of went, okay, that makes sense because then it's kind of a, I'm sorry about that, one-to-one, one-on-one kind of thing. You get three open positions, six is your max to vote for. And you really are kind of, you know, as a community member, you're kind of looking at six, you're not looking at 12. And that's my concern.
One, just real quick, Michelle, one comment on that, Julie, as far as the, the makeup of the board, unless any of us resign or move a block away and, or out of the district, our board in January, basically, when we would, if we revoked this for this special election, we would then put, if we chose to put a, a resolution in place to continue primaries, to have primaries going forward, it would need to be done by April 15th of 2024. There would be the five of us guaranteed here, the one seat that Michelle's appointment seat would be, is the one that we're talking about here for this, for the election. So the dynamics of the board, again, anything can happen, but then we're going to talk about more special elections at that point if one of us leaves. It would still be the, the five of us that could then put that back in place at that point. So, Michelle?
I was just wondering where the 10,000 is being pulled from. Like what does it take away from when we use that?
General fund.
General fund.
General fund.
Okay.
Yeah, out of the, the most flexible pot of money that we, that we have, the one that keeps shrinking.
Yeah.
Yep.
The one that doesn't have a big enough pot.
That is, that is correct, the one where we're below our fund balance policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just, so I know you said you weren't, you, the way you're reading it, you were thinking it probably wouldn't work if we were to, because I really, I've had the same thought as Jessica, can we just do a if this then? Is there a way that we can for sure make sure that we, like, that that's something we can't do? Could we follow up with like the, our lawyer or? I mean, I trust you and also.
I'd say, could we put a note in that the rationale of the board, the rationale of the board is, is during, during, I guess, major election years or something that, that the school board would primary if necessary when there's other things on the ballot? And if it's a special election year, that we would assume no?
Dina?
So I, I think what Chair Mueller is referring to is following the state statute. The board can always do any resolution that the board wants to. So the board could do a resolution that, a resolution that we are going to go back and forth, depending on, you know, with, with this statute and that other resolution. Yeah. And for what it's worth, I agree, I agree with board members that there's, it's a really interesting discussion to hear the board members have and, and not an easy decision.
So from my interpretation of the, of the statute, and like Zina said, we can put whatever we want in a resolution, right?
Right.
We, we just can't, it can't have the meat, if you will, for lack of a better term of, or the, a recourse or direction that's in something that's not in, you know, that's not in accordance to the statute. So we couldn't put in the statute that we will hold primaries for regular general elections, you know, or when the ballot is shared, you know, an election is shared with another entity or, or whatnot, but not for a special election where we're the only one on the ballot. But you can put in the resolution something, you know, like one of the whereas's, you know, the intent of, you know, the, the board is to, you know, X, Y, Z related to kind of the conversation that we're having. That can be in there. So then, you know, should it be, well, let me back up because we would actually be revoking the resolution.
Right.
And I don't know that you revoke a resolution with a resolution, but I mean, fair game, we can do resolutions if we want, that's why I'm concerned, but.
We do revoke and replace.
Yeah.
I mean. I guess another suggestion I would have is, you know, we, we could do a revoke and replace. Might we also be able to revoke and look at some sort of school board policy on primary elections that we would look to, to say, this is when we consider a resolution on primaries? Something, I, I think certainly like if the board resolution from 2008 had included in their whereas statements, something about their rationale or their intent for the future, that would have been helpful to us as current board members. And so I, I think it would be helpful, no matter what we do, to sort of leave some guideposts about our rationale and intent for future boards, even though the board, the future board is free to, of course, do what, what they think is best for the district at that time.
We can do, we can do that as a note in the policy. We could do that as a note in like a resolution policy, you know? Because I, I do think that that's extremely important because trying to figure out what the original rationale was, was it just because it suddenly became available? Because I, from the way I understand it, there wasn't primary for school boards prior to that. And there are some districts that get, and, you know, a lot of, I guess you could say, authentic candidates. We, we don't tend to get a lot of, I mean, when, when we primary, there's usually several people that are really not running just through their name on the ballot. And that's, and that's, that, that has been, and, and it's usually at the trigger point too, which in off years, where, you know, we're sharing the ballot, so it's not expensive. In the off years, I kind of look at it and kind of go, you know, I mean, I, I think it's great to have a voice, but you really need to come out and have a voice because right now you're just wasting money. You know, it's, you know, if you're, if you're going to put yourself on the ballot, you know, you need to run, you know? Tell us what you think, you know? We, we need that, we need that. I, I mean, I would love it if every candidate that ran where it would trigger a primary would actually be at the table talking, you know? We can't, we can't, but it doesn't happen.
Can I, I have a question for Dawn that you may or may not have an answer to. The revocation of resolution establishing the school district's primary election system, is that revocation done by revolu- by resolution? Or is it just we vote to revoke the resolution? Okay, so in that resolution, we could put some language in terms of what, like Jessica said, our intent would be, but not, obviously, we can't go against the state statute, which is basically primary or not primary. But we could say that we are revoking the resolution because there's a special election and nothing else is on the ballot type thing. That could, that could be in the, the, the resolution to revoke.
I suggest you do a resolution that says you want to revoke what you want to go back and revoke. And that's separate from the actual resolution to revoke the current primary thing.
Okay.
Because that's more of a state statute and we're doing it, we have to send it to the county and stuff like that.
Okay. So there'd be like a resolution to revoke and then a second resolution of the intent of the board?
Yeah, once your intent is so it can stay on the books.
So it can stay on the books, okay.
To revisit it for next April.
Right. So let me ask this question so that we can figure out where we go from here.
Yeah.
Hearing what people are saying, it sounds like knowing that this special election, we're the only thing on the ballot, the full cost of the primary would be ours to bear, would, would be okay revoking the resolution on a primary and not having a primary? would would be okay revoking the resolution on a primary and not having a primary?
And for a special election and.
I'm talking about just this special election coming up in November of 2023. What I'm hearing is that people may, and I'm not asking you to vote now or whatever, but people may entertain the revocation of requiring a primary. But I'm also hearing that potentially having a secondary resolution with the board's intent of knowing that should there be a general election, a right, you know, just regular school board elections, that the board would want to primary.
It sounds right.
Yeah, because again, like we discussed at our work session, that having those, understanding why this decision was made would be really helpful for us as we move forward. And so I think as we lean towards like future states, right, and we're looking ahead, I think that that would be really beneficial.
So we have to vote on this at our next meeting, right? Because our next meeting is April 11th, so we have to vote on this because it has to be in place by April 15th. If you would like, I will draft two resolutions to be put in the board packet for thoughts and considerations to appear as an action item on the April 15th meeting.
15th meeting?
Um, April 11th, sorry.
And we would have our lawyer look.
I was gonna ask, yeah, I was gonna ask, could we?
Get something from the county to do the one we actually revoked.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, as long, as long as we get the go-ahead, that it's all, that it's it's reasonable, I guess you would say, reasonable resolutions.
Does that sound like a next step?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I still have no idea how we'll vote.
I agree there. Dawn and Zina, can I get the word version of the current resolution if you have it? Thanks. Good conversation. It's like a conversation-heavy meeting.
As we look at the time.
Yeah, any, any questions on that or anything further?
No, thank you for doing that, though.
Yeah, no problem. All right, moving on to policy first reading. We have the following policies that are out for first reading. 414 mandatory reporting of child neglect, physical or sexual abuse, 414 form. 529 staff notification of violent behavior by students. So those are available on our website for review and comment. And they will appear at a future meeting for their second reading. Any questions on that?
Question?
Yeah.
Do we have a policy meeting in the next, next month? Because I didn't see it on the calendar.
Oh, on the, yes.
So we do, okay, because it wasn't on.
On the 11th.
It's, it just said school board meeting on here, so I just wanted to double check.
Yes.
Okay.
Good question. Any other questions? All right, well, I hope Director Bennett has enjoyed our conversations. We will now move on to our action items. First up is Director Bennett with our 2023-2024 school calendar.
Thank you. Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. At the last board meeting, I did present on the calendar that the committee had put together for 2023-2024 school year. We did put a graduation date on the calendar per the school board request. So tonight I'm seeking approval of the 2023-2024 district calendar.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Julie in a second.
Second.
Second by Mary, any discussion?
Just a comment. An amazing amount of work that goes into this, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I'm going to say. You got it all figured out. Thank you.
I do have a question. Did we, was there an answer on the date of graduation? That was a a question right from the last meeting. Okay, I missed that in the materials then.
Did you want to, Director Bennett, could you share with us what that is?
Yes, so it will be Thursday, I don't have the calendar in front of me, I think it's June 6th.
June 7th.
So it's the day before.
June 7th.
Oh, 6, June 7th, 6, yeah, 6.
Okay, so it's Thursday, June 6th.
Okay, thank you. I missed that when I looked.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. And Director Bennett as well for our life and long-term disability renewals.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. Again, at the last school board meeting on March 14th, I presented information on our long-term disability and group life renewals. Minnesota statute does require that every five years we go out for bids, which we did. And the district is going to recommend that we stay with Madison, Madison National Life for both group and long-term disability. And both the renewals did yield to savings for us. So tonight I'm here seeking approval.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the bids from Madison National Life for group life and long-term disability?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle, any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Bennett.
Thank you.
Next we have Director Tuckrell with our, the Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here tonight with a recommendation to approve the joint powers agreement with Summer Academy.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement?
So moved.
Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie, any discussion?
Just clarification, we did go over this in a lot of detail at our work-study session. There is a lot of material in there. I'm glad to see this program continuing to go forward, but I'm glad also to see that that there are a lot of our concerns have been addressed.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Tuckrell. Next we have board topics. Board topics.
Oh, I have one.
Yes.
Me and Julie were actually speaking about this before the meeting and I just really quickly wanted to note something or ask something, I guess, for maybe next year or whatever, when we choose roles. I just noticed that a lot when we are saying what we've done or things like that, that I have like North Park, because I'm the liaison over there, but she's a liaison to the city of Fridley. And like North Park is in Fridley, and I noticed that we kind of collide sometimes when we're doing things in that way. And I just asked her her opinion on what she thought about maybe whoever is the liaison to the city of Fridley would probably just need to be the liaison to North Park since that's the school that's in Fridley. And I just wanted to throw that out there, that maybe that should go hand in hand.
Yeah, I I definitely think that that's something to, for the board to consider. When we do the first meeting in January, the organizational meetings, I think that's the perfect time to to bring that up. But yeah, I think that's, appreciate the the comment on that.
That was it.
Other board topics. I have one. I just, I just want to thank you all. I think we had some really good conversations last week at our work session. You know, being a board member is not always easy. There are some big decisions that have to be made and topics that we have to address. So I want to thank you all for your time here tonight and last week and talking through some of these things as we try to make the best decisions possible for our community and for our schools. So thank you all for that.
I actually have a comment too. I have really appreciated the teachers coming in and speaking to us at every single board meeting. I I have really never felt so connected to the, to the schools. The schools that that my children no longer go to or in some cases do, I'm seeing another side of it. To be able to have that, that, that constant feedback is extremely helpful. And I'm, I'm, I'm very, very grateful that they're, that they're coming in and talking to us on a weekly basis. And I appreciate them taking time out of their own schedule to to come and benefit, benefit us and give us a lot of feedback. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other other? It's for you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:32.